My name is Rick Hall. I was elected moderator of this town meeting. And I'd like to welcome you all tonight. If you could, put your cellphones on, wired or turned off. I appreciate it. The first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would note that this year's town report is dedicated to Charlie Harrison. You know, when I moved to Lyman in 1981, Charlie was already a fixture here. Lyman's been very fortunate over the years in people that have lived in the community and dedicated themselves to the community, from the Runegans, who almost were early settlers, to Morris St. Clair, probably to Charlie, who I want to thank Vicki for the very fine words that she had in the town report. It really captured Charlie's experience with the town and his effect on the town. Shirley's here tonight, and we all send our condolences to her and Charlie's best. We have certain non-residents in the, both in the town official capacity and also here from the engineering firm BH2M, which, who are prepared to speak if necessary on the Town Hall expansion. Non-residents aren't allowed to speak at a town meeting unless there's a two-thirds vote of it. So the treasurer, Jeanette Lemay, our town manager, Lindsay Gagne, Mike Richardson, Rick, excuse me, Rickman from the BH2M, and Andy Morrow. And I'd like to propose that if they're asked to speak on an issue, that they may speak on that issue. Oh, Sue isn't on the list. Sorry.
I'll know you.
Okay, Sue Belrose. So, and it does take a two-thirds vote, and I'd like to call for a voice vote. All those in favor of allowing all those individuals to speak, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So it's a two-thirds vote. And thank you. With respect to the election that was held, Elizabeth Mitchell and Carrie Jo Sampson were candidates for the select board. And don't let anyone ever tell you that my vote doesn't count. The preliminary results are 135 for Carrie Jo and 134 for Elizabeth. There is a time period to request a recount, and so there won't be any swearing in until that time period has expired. And with respect to the Budget Committee, Susan Bergs received 232 votes, and David Dulong received 12 write-in votes. And two people were elected. David has agreed to serve, and we thank both the candidates, or the one candidate had the write-in for agreeing to serve. The school board director, there were a number of write-in votes. The people with most write-in votes declined to serve, and the town's working down the list, so there's, the winner of that hasn't been determined yet. The first article, which is Article 4 on the town warrant, is, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of..." Pardon? Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Article 3, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to transfer available funds, such as state funds and excise tax in the amount of $900,000, surplus in the amount of $900,000, and any other funds which might be used to reduce the tax commitment." The recommendation of the select board was a 5-0 vote, and the Budget Committee held no vote on it. Is there a motion with respect to that? It's been moved, seconded.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. See if the town will vote to authorize the select board to transfer available funds, such as state funds and excise tax in the amount of $900,000, surplus in the amount of $900,000, and any other funds which might be used to reduce tax commitment. Any discussion with respect to this article? Yes?
Yeah, I want to know what the surplus is.
I got it. So there is a copy available over there, if you like. So the audited, the unrestricted audited balance is $5,218. Oh, kind of loud too, right? Y'all can hear me. Animal control is $12,754. Trust funds are $21,648. State federal grants $83,703. Reserves $735,430. Which leaves us in a balance of $6,717,92. So from that, we took $900,000 out of your last year's vote from fund balance. That leaves you a balance of 4.318. The expected amount of payments that we're obligated to pay for July, August, and September, which is before we get taxes, is 2.982. That will leave us a difference of 1.336.
So it's surplus of 1.33?
Yes, that's what we confused. And if anybody wants, there is a summary over on the table.
Katrina.
Katrina Randall. I just had a question. Is someone on the Budget Committee who said why there was no vote?
We weren't.
Oh, okay, thank you. That does that.
All those in favor of Article 3 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's voted. Article 4, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $7,500 to be used to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Computer Reserve?" And the Select Board and the Budget Committee both voted unanimously. Any motion with respect to this? Been moved, seconded. And moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 4 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article 5, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $7,500 to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account to be known as the Compteur Reserve?" The unanimous votes by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Motion with respect to this article? Been moved and seconded and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 5 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article 6, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $100,000 to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Town Hall Reserve?" Again, affirmative votes by the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Motion with respect to this? Been moved, seconded.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the article as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article 7, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $38,000 to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as the Revaluation Reserve?" Recommendation, article has $38,000, and was unanimously voted by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Any discussion? Yes?
How much is in the revaluation reserve now?
Sorry, I meant to open that for you. As of the end of May, $111,788. Can everybody hear me, or you want me to grab the mic?
All right.
Okay.
I may have failed to ask for a motion on that. If I did, anybody want to move Article 6 and second it? Okay. Seven, sorry, seven. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 7 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article 8, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $15,000 to be deposited in the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Capital Improved?" Both with the, the sum of $15,000 was recommended by both the Select Board and Budget Committee. Motion with respect to this? Been moved, seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 8 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article 9, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $5,000 to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Resident Disaster Relief?" It has a recommendation of both the School Board and the Budget. Same question?
Yes.
Yes. How much is in that account now?
This will be... $15,432. As of the end of May.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article 10, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $6,000 to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Fire Hydrants?" Has the recommendation of both the Budget Committee and the Select Board. Motion with respect to, been moved, seconded and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 10 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a vote. Article 11, "Will the town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of $1,000 to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as the Charter Commission Reserve?" And again, affirmative vote by both the Budget Committee and the School Board. Motion with respect to that? It's been moved, seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article 12, "What's, to see what sum the town will raise and appropriate from taxes to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve known as Bunginut Park." The Select Board recommendation is $25,000. The Budget Committee recommendation was $20,000. This will, article, since there's no dollar amount written in the article, it will require that the motion contain a dollar amount. So who's ever going to make the motion? It can be $25,000, it can be $20,000, it should be less.
I made the motion for $25,000.
Okay, so it's been, it's been moved and...
$25,000.
Twenty-five thousand. I thought you said twenty-five, oh, twenty?
I said twenty-five.
Two people talked at the same time.
Yeah. Well, I recognized.
You recognized me.
Yeah. So that was $20,000. So will the town, is there a second to that? And it's been seconded. So, "Will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of $20,000 to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account known as Bunginut Park?" Any discussion with respect to this? Katrina.
The clarification is, what $5,000 difference is from the Select Board versus the Budget?
We received budgeted numbers...
Can you get the microphone? Yes. Thank you.
Are you ready?
Hello? One for applause?
Yeah. So we received budgeted numbers of $25,000 to re-surface the beach with sand. We spoke with DEP. We just, we can't go any further until we get the funds to move that forward. I'm not sure why the Budget Committee wanted 20 when clearly we had a price of $25.
Is there a Budget Committee person?
Yeah.
When this, when this information came to the Budget Committee, there wasn't a plan. The Budget Committee asked for a plan, and we never got a plan. Just $25,000 for the sand, we're not aware of that. We were told that they were trying to get a permit for that, and we found they didn't get a permit for that, and the chances of getting a permit for that are probably very slim. So he thought it would be better to put 20 than 25.
I'm the Budget Committee member that voted the one, that's not true either. There was a plan, there was number coming through. Did it come at the exact same time? We needed it? No, there was a plan in place. And then $25,000 did line up with the numbers, and it's not that they can't get a permit, it's a process. So it's not like it's not likely they can get the permit, they just need to go forward with money.
Yes.
Well, how much money is there in this particular reserve account on an outright purchase? Eleven cents, if you... You're welcome.
Any further discussion than that, with respect to that? Yes?
Suppose they use the whole $25,000, and then something pops up and they need to do work over there. They're not going to have any money?
So there already is established, like, a building re-ground account? We have a capital, sort of, building on ground.
In other articles?
Right, to cover things like maintenance or something like unexpected coming up.
Any further discussion? Yes?
The $25,000, what you said is for the sand, does that include the permits, the surveying, all that as well?
Yes. Yes. The answer is yes.
And that has already been done?
No.
So what happens with the money if it doesn't pass the ECM?
There is a microphone.
So Donna Johnston, my question is, or was, is there already, does the $25,000 include the permits, the DEP, all the evaluations that need to be done? And what happens if we vote in the $25,000 for this project, and then for some reason because of DEP or regulations or whatever, we can't get the permits? What happens then?
Well, it is designated as a reserve account, a non-lapse, correct?
So, I mean, originally, the way this process started is we had a Bunginut Park Ad hoc committee, and they did, like, a budget review during the budget process, and they presented to the board, they asked for, I think it was $60,000 originally, and the board had tapered that down to $25,000. And the idea was that there's so much work to be done in restoring the park, I mean, the beach is one, but there are a lot of major projects you can begin anywhere on that park to bring it back to life. So the reserve account was sort of geared towards how we can fix dilapidated buildings, get the beach restored, and we can talk about doing volleyball court, or cleaning up the pines area, we just want to make it a better public space for people.
And just as a clarification, sorry, Michelle Falasati, it's not just sand sand, it's the plants are required in the ECM mulch to keep it running. It's not just sand sand being done, it's plants in the pattern, so, okay?
Yes. Yeah, just to clarify, there was a lot of discussion about this particular issue, and Lindsay's correct, there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done up there. In my opinion, hundreds of thousands of dollars. I said, the plan ought to be put together with a total, and let the town vote if we want to spend that much money on Bunginut Park. I think a lot of people are going to say, why do we want to put that much money in Bunginut Park?
Yes?
Is the sand to cover the wood chips? Yes. That's what it is, okay. There's a lot of discussions happening about how that's not even a safe area right now because of the wood and thing.
Any other discussion with respect to this? Yes?
Is my voice carrying you okay? Okay. With respect to your point, Dave, I see what we're doing here is investing in the safety of that park. And we have been pursuing a number of grants, and been very successful so far in obtaining monies from other sources to be part of that investment. So I think this is an incremental step in improving something that needs improvement and has been somewhat neglected over time.
I question whether the sand is a safety issue. There are safety issues out there, but sand's not one.
Any further discussion? So the motion is, "Will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of $20,000 to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account known as Bunginut Park?"
But if this is defeated, and the vote would be higher, but...
You put both down, $20,000.
Right, right. Well, no, let's, let's, the main moderator's manual, if you want to reconsider a motion, it requires, it requires that only a person who voted on the prevailing side can make a motion to reconsider. So if you, you would have to have voted in order to make a motion to reconsider. And second, if you would have had a vote for the $20,000, but changed your mind and want an opportunity to vote on the $25,000. Now, one thing you can do is make a motion, somebody can make a motion to amend the article to substitute $25,000 for $20,000, and then we vote on the amendments. If that fails, we'll be at $20,000. If it passes, then we will vote at $25,000. Does that sound good? Okay? If we, if we have a vote on the article as moved, which is that $20,000, and it is successful, in order to change that amount, there would have to be a motion to reconsider, and somebody, somebodies who voted for the $20,000 would have to make the motion to reconsider, and then there'd be a motion for $25,000.
The same person who made the first motion?
No, it could be, well, you just have to be voting on the prevailing side. An alternative is for someone to make a motion now, before we vote on the article, to amend the article, to change the, change the dollar amount to $25,000. So moved. So it's been, it's moved and seconded. Yep. So there's a, there's been a motion to, to amend the article to read, "Will the town vote to appropriate from taxes the sum of $25,000 to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account known as Bunginut Park?" So we're not voting on the article, but we're voting on whether to amend the article. Okay? Any discussion on that? All right, I'll call for a vote. So this is a vote to amend the article, so that the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 from taxes to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account known as Bunginut Park. All those in favor of amending the article, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, in my view, the ayes have it, so the article is amended. Now we're going to go vote on the article as amended. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of $25,000 to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account known as Bunginut Park? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Article 13, "What sum will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes to..." Excuse me. Well, we're going to have the same thing. So, "What, what sum will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Property Equalization Project?" The Select Board recommended $82,400, and the Budget Committee was $57,400. Would somebody?
I'd like to move $57,400.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Will the town vote to raise the sum of $57,400 from taxes to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Property Utilization Project? And I'm sure that everyone is desiring to know what the Property Equalization Project is.
Got a reval?
So the Property Utilization Project is what we talked about last year. We have a bunch of tables that compute the data for your assessment. Those need to be brought up to the current rate because the growth has been so dramatic. There's a calculation that we do. The state does not let us go before 70%, below 70%. So we, what we need to do is we need to update those tables. And to do that, a lot of towns, I mean, we're not the only town, hiring an outside company to help us do this, because it's a sales analysis and everything else that goes. There's four very large tables. The difference that we have, the $82,000 versus the $57,400, our assessor has been asking for help for four years. We've not been able to get help because we were looking for somebody who was experienced. That doesn't exist right now. So she, when we wrote the RFP, the RFP had an additional $25,000 in that to help catch up on that permit law. And we also wrote into the four articles to get her permanent part-time help or permanent help. So either way, we need to help our assessor, whether we do $25,000 or whether we do the permanent help for her. And that's what she's asking. Is there any other questions on what it is?
Yes. The way you phrased that, you said, is that an either/or?
Yes. The way you phrased it, you said, is that an either/or? Because I know, I noticed that there's an upcoming article, number 19, that talks about assessing assistance. It sounds like a full month, isn't it?
Correct. So we put it in both areas because we didn't know which way it would go. And I know Amber was thinking that she might drop it down and make that motion if the other one passed. So it's kind of a tricky situation and how do you want to help your assessor? Do you want to give her temporary help and put the 25,000 dollars in, which would be temporary, or vote to have an assistant? Did I, I can use the last? So the difference between the 82,400 and the 57,400 is the 25,000. You're welcome.
Katrina?
But I think it warrants remembering, Jeanette just said, finding that person is nonexistent. So my hunch is maybe that at least our assessor could carry on while we look for an assistant. Or is that correct?
Okay, so a little bit. I think the issue we've had is finding a licensed assessor. Like if we're outsourcing and we want to hire a private contractor to assist, they are booked out years down the road. So we've run into that issue. Which is how we started talking about, you know, what about staffing? You know, I think it was over a year ago, we also, not at a town meeting, but in a public hearing, there was a presentation of a technology called LegalView. And there was some sentiment from the public hearing that the public did not want a LegalView company to make, you know, topographic or bleak imagery of the town. Because that would have been maybe a more cost-effective means of providing assistance to the assessor. But people did speak pretty kindly of maybe hiring staffing or getting some staffing assistance for her. So that's why we have two things. We can put money aside to hire an outside contractor. Chances are, that could be two or three years down the road, so the assessor's going to be stuck until then. Or we can put money aside for some kind of staffing. And if we hire somebody, we can also work toward the goal of like succession planning. So what happens when your assessor's out, or they leave, or they resign? You know, you want to have some succession planning replaced that maybe somebody could step into that so you're not at a total loss or have a vacancy to come on.
Thank you. The budget committee had extensive discussions about this. We were told and given the information on the exact bid for putting in this 25,000 dollars worth. And it was, we thought it was completely unreasonable and the select board thought it was completely unreasonable. So, but it stayed in there for some reason. And as you, as you noted, it's also in another article to hire a person. Now, that's going to be another discussion as we come up how to hire that person. The budget committee is in business to try to save taxpayer dollars and that's what we're trying to do. It looks to be like if we're going to put money in two places in the budget, it makes no sense because where is it going to go? We're going to pay for it, but it's going to be carried out. In my opinion, not even the select board wanted to hire that contractor to do the work because it's basically clerical work. It's got nothing to do with being a registered assessor. The work is taking stuff that was not done during a previous assessor and piled up in the assessor's desk. When the assessor left, the new assessor found all that information in the desk. They had it recorded, it never got recorded. And meanwhile, she's getting further and further behind. Now, I don't, I don't dispute the 57,000. We need that. I also don't dispute that she needs some help to get over this hump. The question is, does she need full-time help or part-time help? And that's going to be the discussion on another article. But on this article, I think we take 25,000, throw it out there, and if we don't use it, it's going to just go in surplus now. But we're going to pay for it out of our tax bill.
If you want to point out, not all of that information is entirely correct. I would leave it to the assessor to explain like her workload and what she's got on her plate. And, you know, and I do agree with Dave on some points. But just keep in mind, you know, you have an assessor who's been asking for help for a few years now and has hit roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. At some point, if you put yourself in a position where you're asking your supervisor to, if it's have some help and they don't offer you support, at what point would you spur your hands up and say, I'm all set? So I would consider that as well.
Yes.
Is it a danger of all the vote with 70% by default this coming year?
Yes.
So that would lose our home set exemption and all that.
No, you wouldn't lose it. You'd just need to take five of us.
It'd be significantly reduced.
Yes. So there's already been a reduction in home set exemption, but some of you might have noticed, you're not getting 25,000 or 40,000 right now. So we would definitely go below the 70%, but doing the cost table updates, you know, would be a big part of helping us get up there. Also, taking care of any backlog, you know, inventory would just help support that.
It also plays a role in our revenue reimbursement from the state as well.
What is the current percent that we're at? So that's if we were at 72.7%. What is the difference? It says it was 85% a year ago, it's 76%.
It was 85% a year ago and it's 76% for this year.
Okay, so we're within the state limit?
For now. By the next year, by your next town meeting, you'll be below 70%.
There's one thing I think everybody has to remember is that that also changes the property homestead deduction. Amber, is it like 22,000 or 10,000?
No, it's less than 19,000. Yeah.
Whatever it is. We've lost out on your assessment. It doesn't come off your taxes. So the difference between the full 25 and let's call it 22 is $3,000 difference of your assessment. And whatever the mill rate is, it could come up to be a difference in your taxes of about $2,000. It's that small of a difference.
I just want to make it perfectly clear. The budget committee is 100% for the 57,000 that's going to pay for that reevaluation. We just aren't for the extra money that's going to be maybe given to the contractor to do work that he way overbid on and also have it somewhere else in the budget where we're going to hire somebody to do the same thing. That's, that's where the budget committee is. We agree, we need the re-balance. No question about it. And that's what the 57,000 is.
Yes. I just want to be clear, homestead exemption is normally like 25, right? And they're at 19 right now. That's mine. I don't know if anybody, but 19.
So what we're asking you guys to decide is do you want to put 57,400, which is part of the RFP that we've already got money to get started, to finish off the RFP, to build the tap, the assessment tables? And then add a part-time person with part-time dollars. It's not full-time. What we have for dollar in here is the dollar. It's not full-time, part-time. We haven't made that choice. We have no money to make that choice with. So do the 57,400 and add a part-time person or the 42,000? Or do you want us to hire a contractor at 25,000? That's basically what we're asking you to do. If you do not want to hire the contractor for 25,000, then the 57,400 is what's needed to complete the database. And then we have the 42 for an assistant. Does that clear things up a little bit?
What is the article?
19.
Yes?
So this article is money into an existing, our server account?
Yes.
You already used some of that instead of the RFP, is that what you're saying?
We just signed, I'm going to just study, one board award is the bid on August 8th or 9th?
Yeah, it was early spring.
So have you therefore tapped out the existing?
No, we haven't.
So what is that?
Currently, 17,754 dollars. And we paid them 40. So bid would have been for 97,400 dollars just to do the cost tables. If they want, if we want them to do the permit catch-up, it's an additional 25. So that's what we're asking you to decide on.
I got to clarify on, to me, I've always understood that a non-lapsing reserve account should be sort of like savings account, you know? So we're saving towards new ambulances and we're saving towards new computers or whatever. And these last two articles, 12 and 13, seem to be something that you'll appear to spend in its entirety. To me, that would seem they were just a bit apart. So I'm confused about why they're a non-lapsing reserve account and also a regular article. That's my conclusion on the issue because we were talking about beach sand, the cost tax. It's so light they would fail to do center cost tax. And what we've got is structured each one.
So in article 13, we worked on that. We started adding to that last year. We put in some money. We knew we had to do this project, but we didn't want to ask for 150,000 straight out of the gate. So we put together a three-year plan to work through this. And this is did last year for this. In article 12, we've been putting money in there and doing, we put 20,000 in last year and then they went on a sidewalk, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys went up in, and they saw several dangerous items that were happening. So they fixed that. The next one is this erosion that's going on with the issue with the, with the, no, that is, which is. So that's the next issue that they'd like to address.
They raised the bridge?
And we also did the bridge out of the, yeah, out of the capital improvement reserve fund. So I hope that helps answer your question. It's not definite if it's a large project, we'd like to build on that and not hit the budget straight out of the gate.
She just brought up an interesting fact. This is the property evaluation project. The 25,000 dollars has nothing to do with property evaluation. It has to do with helping the assessor. So how can we use that fund to pay for a different thing outside of the property evaluation project?
So catching up on your permits also increases your valuation or equalization amongst everyone else.
Do you guys want to jump in?
Yeah.
Okay, so property equalization project, it's not a revaluation.
Right, it's not a revaluation. It's the, it's the, it's the equalization difference. That's what you hired the contractor for. That's what you gave you a bid for. And then you say, oh, by the way, can you help our assessor do cars? And how much do you want for that?
So hold on a second. If your neighbor installed an in-ground pool at a house, he holds a permit, and that permit is sitting on the assessor's desk and she hasn't valued that pool, your neighbor is only paying the assessed value on the house and not the pool. And perhaps you, as their neighbor, you have a house with a pool and you're being assessed with your house and your pool in that assessment, but your neighbor. So when we catch up on the permits that are backlogged, it will equalize. Everybody's property will be equal to one another because you'll all be equally assessed together and not somebody paying an assessed value on something that they built with a rug or a pool.
I just agree, but the issue is, and what the evaluation back end is going to give a bunch of tables, it's going to say where we are as a whole. They're not going to come in and say, oh, he has a pool or he doesn't have a pool. That's going to be done when we do the re-balance or sometimes.
No, we typically do that when they pull a permit.
I understand that, but that's why we're behind is because they have to.
Point of order.
Yes.
That's the point.
I didn't hear it.
There's been a motion to move the question.
Second.
And then seconded, and so that requires a two-thirds vote. It's not debatable, it's not amendable, and it's not reconsiderable. So it's a motion to end discussion and move to the article. All those in favor of ending discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote.
Move to amend the article to the 82,400. It was the select board recommendation.
So there's been a motion and seconded to raise and appropriate, to amend the article to read, will a town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 82,400 dollars from taxes to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Property Equalization Project? All, any discussion with respect to that? You know, we're voting on the amendment. We're not voting on the article itself. All those in favor of amending the article to read, to have the figure 82,400 dollars in it, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Pretty close. If we had to show of hand. And all those in favor of amending the article? Yeah, keep your hands up.
Yeah, keep your hands up.
And all those opposed to amending the article? So the vote is certified in favor of amending the article, 16 against the article's amended. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of 82,400 dollars to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as Property Equalization Project?
So moves.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Article 14, will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of 25,000 dollars to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account known as Cousins Bridge? Selectmen and the budget committee are in agreement. Motion with respect to this. Then moved, seconded. Any discussion? Yes. What's, what's the Cousins Bridge account?
So there's a culvert on Day Road over Cousins Bridge, and it's deteriorating, and each couple years, or each year, me and Dr. Key does go and inspect the culvert. Uh, so they've kind of given us a timeline of, uh, to compare, it's probably got, you know, five, six years down the road. So it's another one of those projects where we don't want to hit the budget with, you know, a three-hundred thousand dollar hit. So we've come up with like a long-term, you know, four, five-year plan. Um, we still are in the process of trying to figure out, you know, we would have to find an engineer to give us some pricing of what it would cost for the culvert. We anticipate, we asked around, the locationer and I, um, you know, we anticipated it's likely going to be a couple hundred dollars. Um, without the repairs, the bridge could get shut down, um, if it fall apart, it'd be very dangerous. So again, we, we tried to formulate a five-year plan, put some money aside, um, so that in the long term, we work on that a couple years down the road. We also have LRAP funds that we get each year approximately, and it's different each year, it could be, you know, fifty-five, sixty thousand of LRAP that can be given to us from the state, and that tend to be rolled over. So this has been, um, this is along with rolling over some LRAP and then adding some funds from you guys. We hopefully get a few hundred thousand dollars in the next four or five years to fix the culvert bridge.
What is LRAP's one more?
Love the road assistance program.
Where is it again?
Day Road.
Where?
Your Elizabeth. Your Elizabeth Lane. Head down Day Road, Route eleven, uh, maybe quarter mile up, got a dips down, bridge is there, the culvert is there, Elizabeth Road is right there before it, when it goes up.
Is that where the school used to be?
It's just now.
School back from fire anyway, I think it's fire.
No, closer than that one.
You're talking Day Road, uh, where the, just after the old brick house?
Yes.
First day, that, probably from one level, first brick house.
That's the one, old brick house, three road to the rise.
Any further discussion with respect to this? All those in favor of Article fourteen as, um, moved, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article fifteen, will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as GMFR Vehicle Reserve Account? And that GMFR stands for Building's Most Fire and Rescue. Um, and the recommendation of the Select Board and the Budget Committee is the same. Motion with respect to that. It's been moved and seconded. And seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, how much is the land fund? Right now, at the end of May, there was seventy-three thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. This morning, we cut a check to cover some of the new vehicles that we're working on, and they don't have that amount right now. My apologies. So this is like starting a brand-new count? No, this count has been here. No, I mean, because.
Dollar-wise.
Dollar-wise, you don't have much in there. We have seventy-three thousand, and there is a lease payment due, um, October, August, and it's fifty thousand for each town.
Yes.
I think she sort of just answered my question, but for this article plus sixteen and seventeen, is David checking in similar amount?
Yes.
Yes, fifty percent.
Uh, any further discussion with respect to Article fifteen? As, um, discussed, um, all those in favor of Article fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article sixteen, will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of sixteen thousand dollars to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as the GMFR Facility System and Equipment Reserve Account? The recommendation of both Budget Committee and the Select Board was sixteen thousand dollars. The motion with respect to this?
Yes.
Been moved, seconded. Any discussion? Will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of sixteen thousand dollars to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as a GMFR Facility System and Equipment Reserve Account? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article seventeen, will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of fourteen thousand dollars to be deposited into the existing non-lapsing reserve account known as GMF, um, Building Reserve? Motion with respect to that. Been moved and seconded. And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of Article seventeen as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article eighteen, will a town vote to appropriate from surplus the sum of seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars and vote to appropriate from excise the sum of forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars? And to vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars for a total of one million forty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six for salaries and benefits? And Budget Committee and the Select Board approved the same. A motion with respect to that. It's been moved, is there a second? And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of Article eighteen as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Please opposed? Name? Ayes have it, it's a vote. Article nineteen, will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes for an assessing assistant and to combine with the sum of Article eighteen, if voted in the affirmative? And the recommendation of the school board, uh, Select Board, excuse me, was, um, forty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and the Budget Committee was zero. So I need a motion with respect to that. So, uh, we gotta have a dollar number.
Forty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
It's been moved, um, uh, and is there a second to that? And it's seconded. So will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes for assessing assistant and to combine with the sum of Article eighteen, if voted in the affirmative, um, and, and, uh, and the, um, sum, um, is forty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Discussion? Question? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah. Could you please explain the effect on other personnel in the town hall?
That hasn't been determined.
What does that mean?
That we're voting on a dollar amount.
So this goes for a part-time assistant, is that what you're telling me? What does this, what does this forty-two thousand go for?
It could be part-time, it could be full-time, but that's definitely determined.
Uh-huh. Does anybody want to address this question? A discussion with respect to that.
I just have a question.
Are you, are you a resident?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I live next door. So on Article thirteen, we voted for higher amount, which was discussed to support the assessor, but now we're voting for that, so we're giving two contributions to support.
One is to catch us up, and the other one, to help catch us up, and the other one is to keep us caught up. The, the office is busy. That woman works her self-off, and she needs help, she's asked for help, and, and, boy, I think we'd be really lame not to give her some. Thank you.
If I can, I would also note that the, the, um, assessor from the, uh, town of Arundel has left, and so Arundel is going to be looking for an assessor. Yes.
And the Budget Committee has no number because it's three and three, and made it dead. So it's not that we didn't have a number, we just, it was dead in the water because we had three and three, and it wipes it out. Some of us did want that.
Who's, who's the company that's supposed to do that equalization? RCS Assessment? R E F? RCS Assessment.
Will a town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars from taxes for an assessing assistant to combine with the sum of Article eighteen, if voted in the affirmative? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Article twenty. Will a town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of one hundred and four thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars for a Director of Facilities and Recreation to combine with the sum of Article eighteen, if voted in the affirmative? The Select Board and Budget Committee were in agreement at, uh, one hundred and four thousand seven ninety-three. Their motion with respect to that. It's been moved and seconded. And the Article reads, will a town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and four thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars from taxes, um, for a Director of Facilities and Recreation, and combine with the sum of Article eighteen? Any discussion? Yes.
Is there a job description for this position?
Yeah, so when we did a public hearing in May, Select Board did a public hearing, there were packets put out, um, we're going to need a packet for nineteen, maybe nineteen, yep, um, there is a job description in there. The draft one.
Draft job description.
Could you elaborate a little bit on what this person can do?
So, over the years, I've come across a lot of incidents where there are things that are either broken, or falling apart, or finding out, finding out things are broken when they're broken, instead of getting ahead of it and maintaining equipment and facilities. So we don't really have the capacity to put additional duties on other departments. Um, so this would be something that would really maintain your capital improvements, maintain your facilities, uh, including your grounds and the park. Um, and I think they would, they can help benefit us with, you know, mowing the park, putting them on, uh, supporting recreational programs. We currently have a online rev- renovation program that we just started. Um, we'd like to put on programs up there and rent out facilities, but also advertise if it's a paint night, or bingo game, or whatever, you know, for the public, and we'd need somebody to man that and, and update it and take care of it, along with keeping track of your facilities. Um, over the years, a lot of things have gone underway, and then keeping track of what we have to do.
Yes.
So what was?
No, no, actually, it was the person behind me. Sorry.
What type of qualifications are you looking for for this position?
I mean, we have a draft job description, and so it would be somebody, again, hiring for municipalities is difficult, um, you know, like when we hired for a CEO, it wasn't like we had CEOs lining up at the door. So we kind of have to look at somebody with some experience whether it's maintaining facilities or grounds. They might not have exactly that, we could have something similar, but going through interviewing process, uh, could be going through a little process.
Yes.
What does that mean for parks and recreation?
They continue doing what they're doing, because they have a budget for the programs that they implemented here. Also, I think this person would be a great person to streamline things, so if they're getting, um, maybe they have a lot of programs going on, and they can't really take on anymore, whether it's, uh, trying to figure out what to do with, uh, the swings at the park that's, that's drowning in pool water, maybe this person could help them with that, or maybe this person, they want to start, wanted to do a, you know, BYOB paint night at the library, but it required permitting through the state. And so the Parks and Rec Committee, you know, didn't be able to facilitate all the permitting requirements, you know, this person has established liaison, could help support the community in those things. So I'd like to see the community, you know, continue doing what they do.
Yes.
Is this salary open?
No, it's, it's inclusive of the fringe benefits.
So what with salary?
Seventy-eight thousand.
And where does that fit in with the rest of the, um, um, salary people that have paid for it?
Seventy-eight.
We have, we have a salary program, we did a whole HR study last year, or the year before, so it falls along with that, just progression plan.
Fixing things that are broken, are they going to be higher than that?
Well, that all depends. I mean.
What it is.
It depends on what it is. If it's an electrical outlet, we're going to hire an electrician, you know, if the person's not certified or, you know, to handle those things, yeah, we might have to contact somebody that are really dependent.
So if the person isn't a licensed electrician, plumber, builder, they're going to be able to fix the problems they have?
They can, so if they're not licensed, they can't perform licensed work, correct? But not every problem requires a license. I say that as a facilities director. So I have to remember, we're voting on a number, we're not voting on a job description. We have a town manager from the government, and we have to trust that our town manager, just like the assessor, is telling us if there's a need, right, for something. She, she has to leave her job in the middle of the day, we get the calls from the cops that the ticket that was at Bungin' is broken into, and there's a lot we don't put inside of it. Things like that, that I don't want to be paying salary for a town manager, have to run around and do all those types of things. We're delinquent on life safety inspections in our facilities. Somebody has to do all those things, and we can all say, well, yeah, somebody can do it, but who's the we that does that? We need a person to do that. What was the number?
Sixty-eight thousand and base salary.
How does that compare to some other salary people that are paid by a town?
So what we did, as Jessica was explaining, was a few years ago, we had a salary study done. Within that salary study, um, there are two levels that kind of fall within this range. We put it right in the middle.
So what is the, um, man?
I, I, I'm sorry.
The salary for the town manager?
What is the? What is that? Oh, one. Um, one oh seven.
And, and where's, what's the next, what's the next one? Next item?
Oh, I don't have the step scale with me.
So we don't know where this person sits with respect to the other people that are on salary?
I, well, I think we're voting on, what we're trying to vote on right now is a dollar amount to try to get somebody, it doesn't mean that it's definitively going to be sixty-eight, it means that we're going to budget sixty-eight. It may be that we develop a job description that's lesser, and we hire somebody for a lesser amount. I think what we have to remember again.
Can we use the microphone, please?
We're voting on a number, we're not voting on what is all in job descriptions. So you're saying we based it based on a sixty-eight thousand annual, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to build a job description that's lesser than that, or find somebody who maybe has lesser qualifications, and we can bring them on and build them up and have some room to bump them up and keep them on. So I think try and, personally, this is just me speaking, I think we're getting a little bit into the weeds, so we're, I understand that it's a larger number, but we have to decide if we want to support what the town manager is asking for, for help, or not.
And this was a number that was taken from?
This was a number taken from the study that was done from surrounding towns that had that job description for a Director of Facilities, correct? Wasn't something that you guys came up with, it was from the study?
Correct, there wasn't one that specifically said that, and it kind of fell in between two other areas. It, it kind of fell in between two other areas. So we put it in the middle because we didn't have an exact.
Until you know who's getting this.
Yes. Hey, no. Please direct any questions, comments through the chair. Yes.
Um, I am confused very easily. We're voting on a job, hire somebody that we really don't have a job description?
Well, we have a draft.
You have a draft? Okay, so is this person that's in this draft that you have, is this person that you're gonna hire be somebody that sits in the office and then in turn hires somebody else to do the job? Or are you hiring somebody who can actually do the job and then don't, don't go on, you can't, he's gotta be a licensed electrician or something like that? That's not what I'm asking. If I need somebody to fix the door hinge because it's leaking, is he gonna be the person that does it? Or is he gonna be the person that hires somebody to do it? I mean, I don't, I don't see the clear cutting line of what they're putting up there for a job description.
It really all depends on the need of the maintenance workers going for. I mean, we have donated lumber at Bunginah Park right now that we were able to secure this year that could very easily be used to build pickings. So it could be, maybe they help-
But did I answer my question? Is the person you're hiring going to be able to build, you're expecting him to be able to build these tables? Or are you expecting him to hire somebody to build these tables? In other words, are you hiring, quote, an executive to do all of these? Or are you hiring somebody, uh, to find somebody to do all these? Or are you hiring somebody to do all of these things except for what he might not be licensed for? Yes?
Go ahead.
Um, so, my hope, and I think Wendy's hope, we've talked a lot about this. If the door handle is loose, I would think that the person in this position should be able to fix that. We have, we had an inspection with our, our insurance company and one of the things they told us is the fire extinguisher tanks need to be tipped every month. I would expect that person to do that. If I need some electrical work done, I would not expect that person to do that. So that's kind of where we're heading down. Um, if they're a licensed inspector and they want to work for sixty-eight thousand dollars a year, come on! Um, but I don't think we're going to get that.
Okay. You've sort of, you've sort of answered my question, but not really.
I think it's a hands-on position, is what it's intended to be. The town manager is managing, this person will work as a department under the town manager, correct? And so the attention is to have somebody that can go and put their hands on things and fix them and work on them and have their eyes on things. And we talk a lot about Bunginah. This is, part of this is Bunginah as well. Surveys have been done, committees have put work in, select board members have been, have put work in. It's a, it's a work in- the town that answered those surveys that want us to work on Bunginah Park. The, the Y M C A is not our eyes. They are up there running our park for us on a contract. And so maybe this person in the future would be able to pick up that kind of slack so that-
Okay, I, I understand that, but I've been looking for, are we basically looking for a manager as opposed to somebody who can actually do things?
Thought I just answered that.
I would say both, depending on what the, what the problem is. You know, if I need a hole filled, like, before you guys voted, there was a sinkhole out back yesterday. If I need that hole filled, I would expect them to fill a hole. Um, like I said, being a, an electrician? No, I, I can barely get the ones here that we can get.
And I wasn't expecting somebody unlicensed to do electrical work. I wondered, is this more like a mandatory position or more like a exactly that's going in?
Point of order, I think we beat the fourth.
Did I just answer that?
Yeah.
Real quick, I would say that it would be like public services, municipal services, things that need. It wouldn't be the same thing every day, maybe. Hard for that, but that's the intent.
Yes.
Um, well, the town parks and recreation, I can say that I was sitting over someone about safety concerns that I've seen at Bunginah.
So Holly, can you talk louder?
Part of the microphone.
Can you come to the mic because it won't hear you?
I hate talking in public, but there are so many safety concerns we've come across at Bunginah and I honestly lose sleep over them. And I think that just having somebody to just go out and do, I work a full-time job, so for me to research, um, you know, who's qualified to come do, you know, rectify these situations and then permitting. Like, that's a big, that's a big thing too down at Bunginah. And in order to research what permits are required, it's so time consuming. And so there are a lot of things that need to be, in my opinion, need to be done immediately. Um, but it just, I just don't feel like parks and recreation on a volunteer basis has the time to do the research and the permitting that's required.
Thank you, Holly.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a [inaudible].
Will the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of?
Other question, you move.
Um, and just to play what Jessica said, I, she says we're not voting on a job, really, we're voting on a number. And I think for those of us who don't watch maintenance every week or go, and I did try and step online of the resident and [inaudible] on the public hearing, we don't understand how a new job is drafted for facilities and recreation and it's not even listening to you guys, it doesn't even want to picture it in my head. Yet likely, it would be almost the same as what the town administration's doing. That, that's where I get lost, I get, I'm a lot lost in the weeds of whether they're [inaudible]. Sorry, that was a pass. My loss, not one hundred and four thousand seven hundred ninety-three now. So that's where I am, like, yeah. That's all. I'm not saying we don't need a director of maintenance, we probably do. Okay? But I couldn't find any explanation of that. And I, I think more than a couple of [inaudible]. And I have [inaudible]. So, that includes benefits on?
Yeah, I heard.
Okay, okay, but it's, the salary's sixty-eight thousand.
Yes.
This five thousand, in that, in that amount of money, this five thousand dollars for transportation is a thousand dollars that goes to the, out of the rectifier, that's what was given to us as a budget.
You believe that?
No, they agreed to take that out.
Uh-huh.
And you guys came to an agreement on that?
Mm-hmm.
We came to an agreement to put it to the people, not the dollar value.
Not the five thousand?
The five thousand is in there.
Oh.
Because if you, if you take the seventy-three or sixty-eight dollars, sixty-eight thousand, you'll come up with-
Katrina?
What's that answer? I'd like to make the motion that we limit the budget.
Okay, well, you've made it as expected. Again, that's a, um, non-negotiable, non-amendable, um, and requires a two-thirds of what. All those in favor of, um, limiting the page on this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's, uh, um, voted in the affirmative. So we'll, we'll proceed to the, um, article, Article twenty. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of one hundred and four thousand seven ninety-three for a director of facilities and recreation and to combine with the sum of Article eighteen that voted in the affirmative? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
This will have a, you have to do it again. Yep, it can bring, so all those in favor of, of the article that is raising, uh, one hundred and four thousand seven ninety-three, please raise your card.
You can't take the dollar value and the benefits and come up with one hundred and four thousand dollars.
All those opposed? Twenty, twenty-nine to eighteen, the article carries. Article twenty-one, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of one hundred fifty-eight thousand three forty-four for general administration account? Motion with respect to this? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty-eight thousand three hundred forty-four dollars from taxes uh, for the general administration account? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article twenty-two, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of eleven thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the elections account? Motion with respect to this? Been moved and seconded. Um, any discussion? All those in favor of the article as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article twenty-three, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of thirty-one thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty cents for the general administration dash concern, insurance services account? Motion? Been moved, is there a second? And seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-three as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article twenty-four, will the town vote to raise and appropriate some taxes to some twenty-five hundred dollars to be deposited into a non-lapsing reserve account known as a contingency reserve? Motion? Been moved? Second? Any discussion? Yes?
What do you use that for?
If any emergencies that we come across, that we need a fourth broken toilet, um, if you need to do a thousand dollars.
So, how much have you got in there now?
Twenty-five hundred dollars. We don't, it's not in a reserve account, it's been in the regular budget and closed out at the end of every year. So now we're starting a reserve account so it doesn't close out, up to five thousand dollars.
So right now, there's nothing, but we're gonna have twenty-five hundred if it gets home?
Yeah.
All those in favor of Article twenty?
On what?
Yes.
Uh, that doesn't need to be in there, that five thousand dollars right now looks like.
That was an agreement between-
I know it was, but it was never voted on by the town.
If you look, if you look back-
Just ask.
I guess if you don't put it on an article next year, if there's five thousand dollars in it and that's what you guys agreed to for a limit, you just don't have an article next year.
Is it?
Um, all those in favor of Article twenty-four as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm consistent.
Article twenty-five, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of eight thousand six hundred seven dollars for the animal welfare account? Motion with respect to this? Moved and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-five as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a vote. Article twenty-six, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of two thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars for health and human services? Motion with respect to this? Been moved and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor of the article as written, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? It's affirmatively voted. Article twenty-seven, will the town vote to appropriate from excise the sum of eight hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred forty dollars for the roads account? Been moved? Moved? A second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-seven as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article twenty-eight, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of eight hundred twenty-eight thousand sixty dollars and thirty-three cents for building and grounds account? Is there any, uh, motion with respect to this? It's been moved, is there a second? And second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the article as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Um, Article twenty-nine, will the town vote to appropriate from fiscal year twenty-six revenue the sum of thirty thousand dollars and to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of three hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars for a total of three hundred sixty-three one eighty-five for this state transfer station account? Motion? Been moved? Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of ten thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the parks and recreation account? Motion? Been moved? And seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor of the article as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article thirty-one, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of one hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars for the outsourced general administration account? Is there a motion with respect to that? Been moved, is there a second? And seconded? Any discussion? There's an explanation of what that includes. All those in favor of this motion, of the article as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of two hundred nine thousand dollars, two hundred nine thousand eight hundred three dollars. Motion with respect to that? Been moved? And seconded? Any discussion?
Oh, town vote.
What is the P S A P, please?
Nine eleven.
P S A is nine one one?
Nine one one, service.
Thank you. All those in favor of the article as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Article thirty-three, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of seven hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-three cents for the town alignment share of the Goodman's Mill Fire Rescue Department and set some to be paid with the treasure of the Goodman's Mills Fireman Rescue pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the town alignment and the town of Dayton. Any unused amounts will be carried forward. To the effect of the town of Dayton must also vote to appropriate its share of such costs. A, uh, motion with respect to this? Yes? And any second? And it's second? Any discussion? Yes?
Um, so they have to put on the exact same amount?
Um, the inter, the, isn't the, uh, isn't their share smaller?
Yes.
Dayton is because of the population.
Correct. And that, that's the size.
Yeah, and have, uh, in past years, they've always voted before us, have they? Has Dayton voted?
No.
Okay.
It says seventy-two, our share percent. So there's a split.
We split equipment.
Twenty-seven.
Some other things, fifty-fifty, and then the, uh, their portion is less than some of the others.
So, so my question is if they, if they- So, so my question is if they, if they vote less than their share.
Then, then they have to vote their share for this vote to be effective, which means it will be without fire protection. Now, it's never happened.
Well, see, that won't happen in the future, but if they vote less than what they're supposed to, then does this make our vote? No, or does it mean they're out?
To be effective, the town of Dayton saw, it means that the vote is not effective, our vote is not effective, we haven't appropriated it.
There's no budget. Then we would have to have a special town meeting, and so would that.
I'm all sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of article thirty-three as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-three, will the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of eighty-one thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars? Did I say? I think I'm water. I'm dehydrated and dilated. Okay, I'll try again, I got the number right tonight. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to, to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of eighty-one thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-one cents for the town of Lyman's share of the Goodwins Mills Fire and Rescue Department. Set some to be paid with the treasure of the Goodwins Mills Fire and Rescue pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the town of Lyman and the town of Dayton. Any unused amounts will be carried forward to be effective, the town of Dayton must also vote to appropriate its share of such costs. Motion been moved, is there a second? And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of article thirty-four.
I think this, you might not know what this means, so I'd like to explain.
Okay.
The fire department has asked for more full-time employees. If you read the bottom line, it says this article would increase the hours by sixty and the full-time hours by forty-two. That's why we wanted to make it separate, so that townspeople could vote the budget for the fire department on one end, and then they could decide if they want more fire protection on the other, and that's why they're separate.
All those in favor of article thirty-four as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents for capital purchases. And the budget committee and the select board were kind of saying. Motion with respect to this been moved, is there a second? And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of article thirty-five as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-six, will the town vote to deposit the balance of funds available on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four? That were derived from the sale of timber and any future sales of timber into a non-lapsing reserve account known as the timber sales designated for capital improvement projects and other initiatives related to town assets? Motion with respect to this been moved and seconded and seconded, any discussion? Yes.
So what is future sales? Is that for the fiscal year next year or future sales until end of time?
It's, it's future sales, so we have several parcels of land and currently working with a forester that we hired to just conduct some timber harvesting. So they haven't fit all the parcels yet, it'll probably carry into the next fiscal year, so we just want to be able to collect the revenue and give them to the budget.
So as I read this, this means that we won't have to vote on this again because we say it's in future sales. Am I correct?
Yep.
So this is what I can just say, it must be forecasted. Only clarification.
Was the intent to be during the fiscal year, what are we in, fiscal year twenty twenty-six now, are going to be?
So, the way I see it is that, yes, you're getting locked in for future sales, but once you timber harvest, there's nothing left to timber harvest. You have to wait another thirty years before you can timber harvest again.
When it says future, it means forever, whatever year you're looking at now or twenty years from now. That's, that's just my opinion.
Yes.
Is it just based on the properties you've identified, currently identified, or could it go? It could be any properties.
Yes.
Other than mass leasing boards, where are we harvesting the timber? Tell us one of the few. If you have a little battery, it's a lot here.
Yes.
The way I read this, it just says we have to sell the timber that we've harvested and go into the second user category, so it's not about not harvesting anymore, it's about putting money in there?
Yes. Right, now, this isn't a decision to, to harvest timber, you have to, that has to be made by the select board. Right, I.
Sorry.
No problem.
I can hear the answer to the question. You should be able, the parcel she was asking about, the parcel. Where in Lyman are we harvesting timber?
Town-owned property. Yes, where? Do we have to, where do we town-owned property? If you look at the tax map, so there's like a, like your primary tax map that shows the entire town and all the lots. I'm answering the question, each tax map has, you'll see town, so each town-owned property is identified as town.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that there are timber harvesters there in this town.
I'm curious because if there are harvesters, harvest timber in large amounts, large quantity, uh, long period of time.
Yeah, we work with a forester who's identified like parcel of land and just identified parcel for timber. I don't have the exact addresses from.
They did do a study last year and they identified all parcels that were possible to become a harvesting, because only harvested two. There's no discussions as far as I know going on about other parcels that are going to be timber harvested, but they did identify which ones should be harvested or could be harvested.
All, all those in favor of article thirty-six as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-seven, will the town vote to deposit the balance of funds avail, available on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four that were appropriated for the Kennybunk Pond Reserve into the Longmanet Project Preserve? And that was eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. I don't want to talk.
I just want to clean up my brush.
I don't, I don't want to talk about this one, all right? So, I want a motion and a second. All those in favor of the article as written?
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-eight, will the town vote to take from the state of Maine Snowmobile Registration Fee Fund, set money to be turned over to the Lyman Snowmobile Club for the purpose of maintaining their snowmobile trails to be open for use by the public? These funds will be released after the town has reimbursed for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five registration as determined by the state. Motion been moved, seconded, seconded, any discussion? Yes.
So what's the average? Do they ever get audited, let's see how they're spending their months?
As far as audit is concerned, you have to ask them where not, because they're auditing their book, and I don't know if they have to have them audited. I think it was one thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars, I'm trying to look now, that we recently paid them.
So the state reimburses, gives money back to the town, right?
Yep, the state gives a percentage back to the town, and then it's pretty common in, in most areas for the townspeople to turn around and give it to the clubs to maintain the, the trails, thank you.
It is okay, I'll read, I take back my audit question.
All those, yes.
Have you done this in the past?
Yeah. For several years now.
All those in favor of article thirty-eight as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Will the town vote to authorize a tax collector to success, to accept, excuse me, any prepayments of taxes not yet due or assessed? Any taxes of pay, of the amount, paid above the amount finally assessed shall be paid without interest upon request. Motion with respect to this been moved and seconded. All those in favor of article thirty-nine as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article forty, will the town vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at three percent for the fiscal year? Motion with respect to this been moved, is there a second? And seconded. Will the town vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at three percent for the fiscal year? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article forty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from overlay to pay tax abatements and applicable interest granted during the two thousand twenty-six fiscal year. Explanation, even though thirty-six MRSA authorized assessors to raise overlay, the municipal officers have no authority to spend the amount of overlay without an appropriation vote. Motion with respect to this. All those in favor of article forty-one as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article forty-two, will the town vote to set a date for taxes to become due and payable? And to fix an interest rate of seven point five percent for interest charged on taxes unpaid after this, or thirty days after the bills are made out, whichever is later. And there's a recommendation that the due date for the first half year will be October first, this is twenty twenty-four, and it should be, I'm, we're gonna, and so that, we'll, we'll correct that when the motion is made. So it should be October first, twenty twenty-five, and April first, twenty twenty-six. So will the town vote to set October first, twenty twenty-five, and April first, twenty twenty-six as a date for taxes to become due and payable? And to fix the interest rate charged on taxes unpaid after this, or thirty days after the bills are made out, whichever is later. Motion with respect to that been moved, is there a second? And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the article, which will set due date of October first, twenty twenty-five, and April first, twenty twenty-six for the half-year taxes? And the interest rate of seven point five percent for unpaid taxes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Will the town vote to authorize the select board to waive the foreclosure of a tax mortgage? In pursuit to state statute, if, one, the taxpayer agrees in writing to pay the outstanding balance within one year? And, two, no such waiver has been granted by the town's select board within the past three years? Motion with respect to this.
One more motion.
Okay, it's been moved, and then is there a second? And then seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of article forty-three as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article forty-four, will the town vote to authorize the select board to waive foreclosure of a tax mortgage pursuant to state statute on such terms as may be determined by the select board to be in the town's best interest? Motion, yes, and then seconded, any discussion? Yes.
One is to, to allow them to work out a tax agreement when it's going into foreclosure? And the other one is to waive it if it's not in the best interest? So, there is a property and it's just a private road where the guy built around it? And he now only owns the road, and we're taxing him on the road? And he's letting go into foreclosure? So, the town doesn't want to own the road, it's not up to code. So, we've been waiving it and we're going to litigation on it. Does that explain it?
Also, if a property was a hazardous waste.
Correct, that's a good one too.
All those in favor of article forty-four as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article forty-five, will the town authorize the select board to sell any tax-acquired property and/or town-owned property the select board deems no longer purposeful for municipal use? And to issue a quitclaim deed for the same? Sales to be by sealed bid, public auction, contract with a real estate broker? If to other than the owner of record at the time of foreclosure? And no select board member during the term of his or her office may acquire from the town any interest in real estate acquired by the town on account of not paying taxes? Unless the owner of record at the time of foreclosure was the select board member? Or the son, daughter, spouse, or parent of the select board member? Except that the municipal officer so used the special sale process required by thirty-six MRSA forty-three C for qualified homestead property if they choose to sell to anyone other than the former owner.
Did you read that?
I can even read it upside down. So, motion with respect to article forty-five, and seconded, it's been seconded, any discussion? I can't read it again. All those in favor of article forty-five as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Article forty-six, will the town vote to deposit any excess proceeds from the sale of tax-acquired property and/or town-owned property? The select board deems no longer purposeful, for municipal purpose, into a non-lapsing reserve account to be known as asset proceeds? To be designated for capital improvement projects and other initiated, initiatives related to the town assets? Motion with respect to this, and seconded, been moved and seconded, any discussion? Article forty-six, as written, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, it's a vote. Article forty-seven, will the town vote to authorize the select board to accept and expend state and several grant funds received during the fiscal year? Motion with respect to this been moved and seconded. All those in favor of article forty-seven as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. We've got no select board members, we sworn in, right? Because of the, uh, uh, pillage. Okay, so.
Do you have that budget?
You got that budget?
Okay, I'll score it. Before the town, town meeting reserves, we'll rule this out. So you have the votes ready? If people would, if there's anybody curious about the town hall expansion process, about the process. But I hear our representatives from expansion, and able to answer any questions about that. So if you want to stick around for that.
Senate committee? He was a writer. There was two of them, there was six, two, three of them. She was on this past year. She, she ran for.
She did?
Yeah. And next year, there'll be, like, one opening. There'll be one opening. I think.
Make a motion to return?